We have a moment of silence, please.
24, 27.
Roll Comick.
Counselor Coast.
Here.
Counselor Strata.
Here.
Counselor Shamp.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Sturts.
Here.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
All members are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And we have approval of prior meeting's minutes. So move.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Coast and second by Counselor Frye. Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, we don't have anybody written down for individuals wishing to address Council. April, pets, you called in, and I was wondering if that would be okay under safety and code?
That would be fine.
Okay. And what about Josh here? Then, yes, Josh Roth is coming in to speak to us, Office of Community Development. So, thank you, Josh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Josh Roth. I'm a community development analyst with the Ohio Development Services Agency. The office that I work in is the Office of Community Development, and we are essentially the pass-through entity from through which most of the state of Ohio's housing and urban development money comes through. My role specifically deals mostly with the community development block group, so that's what I'm going to speak about a little bit today. The state of Ohio, I don't know, I don't know exactly how familiar everyone is with community development block groups, so I'm going to fly through pretty quickly at a pretty low level, so feel free to interrupt or ask questions if you have any. So the state of Ohio gets $42 million of community development block group, or block grant each year. Forty-two was last year, probably going to get a little bit less than that this year. Of the $42 million, 20 million of that goes to the community development program, which is the program that I work on specifically. 10 million goes to the CHIP program, which is an owner-occupied, an owner-occupied housing rehab and a rental rehab program. Then there's $10 million which goes to the water and sewer program and the economic development program. And there's a, we skim a little bit off the top for admin and a discretionary program, which is being rebranded as a Target of Opportunity. Community development block grant has to meet one of three national objectives. The first of which is low to moderate income. The second is slum and blight, either on an area-wide or a spot basis. And the final is urgent need, which is typically in response to a presidentially declared disaster, and our office is really reluctant to try to use that national objective. So like I said, I work directly with the community development program, and of those $20 million, 60% of that goes into an allocation program, which is distributed to 104 communities on a formula basis, and Fulton County gets a little over $100,000.
Yeah, we got $100,000 last year. So we're projecting about that amount this year, or not any less than $75,000.
Right, no less than $75,000. That's the minimum. The remaining 40% of that goes into the competitive grants, and we have three competitive grants, one of which is the neighborhood revitalization, which is a way to incentivize communities to target smaller infrastructure projects into a single neighborhood, so that the people that are living there actually see a little bit of change that's going on. Another one of those is the downtown revitalization program, which the city of Wausau has been awarded. And the final is a critical infrastructure project, which is $300,000, up to $300,000 for a single component piece of infrastructure that's deemed to be critical. So it could be a main thoroughfare, it could be a bridge, it could be something related to a water and sewer facility, potentially. Related to the downtown revitalization, there's the opportunity to fund infrastructure in a central business district, but there's also, the main purpose of the program is as a private rehab project, and part of the application process, the mainstream organization for Wausau, which is the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, identified that there was a significant demand for private rehab funds for things like facade improvements, code enforcement. So the very first step that the city of Wausau should be taking next for the implementation of its downtown program would be to start soliciting projects to, to fund, to be funded through that private rehab line item, which David Wright has informed me that he has applications in the works with a bunch of building owners. And then I wanted to circle back to the discretionary project, or the Target of Opportunity program. David submitted a pre-application for the Carnegie Library.
The, the letter of intent was submitted for the Wausau Public Library, which we have a letter of acceptance back to the state for a $200,000 match.
So we're willing to entertain a full application for that. And so that's the nuts and bolts of my program. If anybody has any questions about that specifically, let me know.
You brought up about the $300,000 for the critical, and you mentioned something about water, and what does that pertain to, pretty much, like?
The water treatment?
Yeah.
It could be water lines. It has to, it cannot have a documented health hazard, because we have a water and sewer program that's, that's, the only water and sewer projects that are eligible for that are ones with a documented health hazard, and there can't be any overlap between our competitive programs. So it's a little bit tricky sometimes to qualify a water and sewer project as a critical infrastructure, but if there's extenuating circumstances, like maybe a control panel's gone bad, something like that that needs to be replaced with the system that isn't tied directly to a health hazard, then it might be eligible for the critical infrastructure.
Great. Any other questions, council?
I'd like to just add-
Go ahead.
A little bit, just with working with the state of Ohio, Josh took over for our formal representative for the area, which is Michael Novikov. I believe he came up another time a year or so ago and spoke with you folks and spoke with county commissioners. What we're trying to establish, or what I'm trying to establish, this is going to be the first time that I'm working through these programs and trying to create a good rapport and keep that up. I think we have a good line of communication, so I'm going to lean on the state quite a bit to get their, their guidance through these programs and make sure that we use the money for the best program or activities that we can for the city of Wausau. So if there's any, any questions that come up, feel free to direct them to my office, and I can, if I can't answer them, I'll, I'll direct them to Josh or the state ODSA office, so we can get those questions answered. Thanks. Thanks, Josh.
A lot of information, very quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, committee reports. Safety and Code.
Safety and Code met on February 16th at 4:00 to discuss a proposed amendment to Section 505.1, 01. Chief Torbit has spent much time writing up this amendment, and after discussion with Chief Torbit and questions from the Safety and Code Committee and other people in the attendance, we are recommending this new amendment. And I guess any questions might be directed towards Chief Torbit.
April?
It's not anything big, it's just something short, as far as, I had sent an email earlier today, and so it was just kind of, just a little bit about that, as far as, obviously I came to the meeting where Chief Torbit presented that information and they reviewed it, and there are some things that obviously I think that some people aren't going to like, some people will like, but one of the things that we had kind of discussed, and I just wanted council to, I guess, consider it potentially again, is looking at a provision in that, whereas obviously we're adding the annoyance that kind of takes over instead of the nuisance dog where the state is concerned, looking at having owners be able to, if there's a certain amount of time where their dog hasn't had any other incidents, that there is a provision that they could come off of that list. That way then, if they have a puppy or something like that, where it is put on the annoyance list, that if they haven't had any more incidents for, you know, two, three years, and they do a few of the things that were kind of recommended within the law anyways, kind of being proactive that they could get off of that list, so that way then their puppy that may be a year or two old, when it's seven, eight years old, if it gets out again, and it's considered one of the second citations or whatever, along with the progression, that it's not then deemed dangerous, that there is that kind of ability, if your dog obviously is on the annoyance list, it's not deemed dangerous, it's not doing anything aggressive, it's out. But looking at having them at least have the option of having their dog taken off that list, rather than it being just basically a lifetime sentence on that. So that was really my consideration. I know that Chief Torbit had, wasn't really fond of that idea, and kind of, you know, discussed a little bit more about, you know, the warnings and those kinds of things, and common sense approaches, and I've been helping Tasha review some of the police reports and those kinds of things, and one person's definition of common sense and another officer's definition of common sense aren't necessarily the same. So I think if there's some sort of ability to come off of those lists, I think that that would be something that would be beneficial. So.
Well, I can, I can address that a little bit. The issue is, now, I'll give you a copy.
Sure.
That, under the state law, three violations and you're considered a dangerous dog. We cannot change state law. We have to be in compliance with state law. We can make it stricter, we could make it two times, and you're deemed dangerous.
Right, and I think that's what I refer more to is the annoyance list, as far as that there's the ability to potentially come off of that.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter if you came off the annoyance list, because annoyance is just in the city of Wausau, and if that dog gets deemed danger, if the dog has a third violation, even if it's off our list-
Right.
-it still is, falls into the dangerous. And unfortunately, there is no, under the state statute, there is no way of getting off that. Once you're on there, you're on there for life.
Okay. I just, with reviewing a lot of the police reports, I reviewed back from 2012, and there was a few dogs on there that, and a few incidents where there were very severe bites that should have been probably cited as bites, that wrongly cited as loose dogs, different things as far as multiple incidents with certain ones, and it doesn't appear that, I tried to look through the court records, and it didn't appear that for the majority of them that they, they should have gone to some of those criteria, and they didn't. So that was some of my concerns as well as those things were enforced.
Under 505.01, it takes care of loose dogs, dog bites, all of those fall under the same category.
Okay.
It's up to the judge as far as the sentencing and the punishment, once he gets, we send them over under that section. What they're deemed at that point is between the attorneys and the judge at that point in time.
Okay, so it's more-
Our hands are pretty much tied.
Of course. Issue then of why there were some severe bites that happened that weren't, that the dog was not even, there was no citation to the dog, there was no label to the dog that probably should have been.
If we send it over to the prosecutor and they say no, then we can't go any further with that. That's, I would have to look into individual ones.
Right, absolutely.
90% of the time, April, that's the problem, that we send it over and either people do not want to prosecute, don't want to testify, or they've handled it and threw the court and plea bargain it into a different-
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that if there was a serious dog bite, that things like that could be negotiated for the dog's behavior.
I would prefer they didn't, but I have no control.
In the court system, you mean?
Yes.
You didn't, you didn't know that they did that?
I guess I figured that if a dog bit and it was a serious injury that was proven, and you could see that, I guess I had figured that the judge would deem that dog dangerous based on its behavior. So I guess I learned something. Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Okay. Can we have a motion for the safety and code?
I'll make a motion. I accept your recommendation.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Sturts and second by Counselor Coast. Is there any discussion? Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, move on to department head reports. Welcome back, David.
Thanks. Just working through downtown revitalization, that grant program, decided that it should have a representative from the state level come up and talk to you folks about some of those community development block grant programs, and Josh was gracious enough to do that. Got another call today, so there is that interest. I would expect that that interest is going to pick up as, as the spring season comes before us and, and the weather starts to warm up a little bit, and we hit construction season. So moving through the environmental reviews with that, and hopefully we can get some commitments and eligibility and get some visible activities happening here in the next few months. Maybe working with Dennis on, on a project over at Haas Door with some revolving loan fund dollars. And then Josh had mentioned the Targeted Opportunity Program with the Wausau Public Library, so there may be some extra community development block grant, block grant funds that may be eligible for that project. So we'll move forward with those, and hopefully we continue to receive good news and get some activities funded up here.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Chief Slaughter is out on the call right now. Chief Torbit?
Well, I hate keeping, bringing up snow, but that seems to be one of our issues. We've had several complaints over the last couple of days of people either pushing their snow out into the middle of the roadway or blowing it out into the roadway, and it is against the law, you need to clean up the roadway, and you don't want to be held liable for any accidents that may be caused by you pushing a pile of snow out in the middle of the road. As well as keep your sidewalks clean and debris-free as much as possible. I have had officers out issuing warnings on that, trying to get people apprised of it. We get calls all the time referencing, a lot of the houses that you see that don't have their sidewalks plowed are ones that are in foreclosure or vacant. We have a hard time getting those taken care of, but we are working with Town Hall to get those cleaned up as quick as possible. And looking on the brighter side, and we are now taking applications for the youth police academy. That's going to be June 8th through 12th, as long as we don't have many more snow days, it pushes the school year back, but we are hoping that we can shoot for that time period. It will be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Applications are being taken right now at the school. We have a cutoff of 15 people on there, and that usually fills up quickly. So if you're interested, contact our department or the SRO at the school. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Tom is in Columbus. Classes, so Dennis, you're up.
I had one additional snow complaint. It came in yesterday, or excuse me, yesterday would have been Sunday, it came in Friday. Had to do with downtown businesses and people having to trudge two or three storefronts away to not have to walk through snow, either at the edge of the sidewalk or in the curb. I explained that our city forces in the downtown area plow the snow to the middle of the road, and just like any homeowner, it's the business owner's responsibility to, to clear their own sidewalk. So it may have been a case of an empty storefront, may have been a case of our guys had already gone through, and then they shoveled snow out into the edge of the road. I'm not sure, but there again, we've had more snow than usual, not as much as last year thankfully, but more than normal. Last week, I attended with the mayor, another meeting with Clinton Township concerning sidewalks, possibly going out to 8:40 West Elm. There's some progress there. On the 24th, I attended a board review concerning Haas Door's proposed expansion, and in regards to that, I'd like to ask for a utility committee meeting. That would be Jeff, Heather, and John, at some point in time between now and the next council meeting, to talk about a storm sewer that needs moved. Lynnfoot Street project, as far as I know, is still with the Federal Highway Department, but I've not heard of any snags. State of Ohio still plans to put the thing out for bids sometime in April, I believe. Tonight, Resolution 2015-10 is the Toledo Edison easement for electricity along Glenwood Avenue. Spoke with the, the folks from Edison. They need that to be in effect by the end of this month. So the plan is to give it a first read tonight, give time for any public input, pro or con, if there is any. I doubt if there will be, but, and then at the next meeting, assuming we don't get any negatives, to go ahead and pass it on emergency then. I should give them plenty of time to, to do their thing and not hold up the development that's going on. I guess that's it. Was there any question?
Just a comment, Dennis. I see in this freshly printed year-end report from the water plant, 88.5 billion gallons were not accounted for. I was wondering if my water could fall in that unaccounted-
No, and I haven't-
Does that take a motion?
It would, it would take more than a motion.
That's quite a large amount of water.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, and I'm not certain, I haven't chased that down yet, but-
Somebody's left their faucet on.
Well, last winter we did. We had several people that we had leaving their faucet on, and we have this one as well. I don't know if that includes the, the water that goes on Biddle Park, that's metered, but maybe-
Yeah.
Maybe that information didn't get to them, and then-
Okay.
There's just leaks and stuff, too.
Water breaks.
Water main breaks, fire department issue.
Gotcha.
It is, it is a lot, though. It's more than it should be.
How much is it normally?
Well, we try to shoot for 15%, but that's pretty tough to do sometimes, as you well know.
Would the towers have had anything to do with that, when you drained the towers down?
Yes, yes. There's 750,000 gallons or so right there.
Yeah. See? It's good with you. Thank you.
I provided the income tax revenue for March. It's looking pretty good this year. We're up 21% from last year. We do believe that last year's figures are lower due to all the snow and bad weather last year, so, but we're looking good for the show.
It's looking better than the snow wise.
Yeah. And the budget, month-end figures for March, I've also included in your packets. So that's looking, well, it's pretty good as well. That's all I have tonight. Thank you. Tom?
Still working on a bunch of real estate matters, one of which is easement that you'd be voting on tonight. Also, I guess I'd mention, I just received drafts from the Clemens Nelson folks for the job classifications. I'm going to be copying those and getting those to the appropriate folks, and we'll start the review process and work those through and get those done. And then after that, then the next step would be to start the evaluation process for salary review and compensation. So I think that's it. I'll, as I say at the beginning, I'll just copy it and re-strat it.
Okay. Moving on to first reading of legislation. We have Resolution 2015-10. Authorizing the mayor to grant a permanent easement to Toledo Edison for a 12-foot strip on the east side of the right-of-way along Glenwood Avenue for underground electrical services.
First reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Frye and second by Counselor Shamp. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, Resolution 2015-10 passes on first reading.
Thank you. We have nothing under second reading. Moving on to third reading of legislation. Resolution 2015-9, authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement for county-wide emergency management agency pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5502.
So moved. Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Shamp and second by Counselor Strata. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Abstained, employed.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturts?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Five yeas, one abstained. Resolution 2015-9 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
Okay, thank you. On your new business, everybody got the big 2014 year-end report for your own reading to take home. I'm sure you'll go from front to back with it, but I want to thank administration for getting that in and getting it done, so that everybody can put it together. Okay, other things under new business. March 26, we are going to be doing a proclamation for epilepsy day. We had a couple, mother and her daughter come in requesting this, and it's nationally observed on March 26, and they would like Wausau to step on board with that. With that being said, they are going to come in and talk to us at the next meeting and give us some information about it, but the one thing I wanted to let council know is with this comes the color purple, as in pink for cancer. So she is asking if we would like to show our, jumping on board with them, Wausau, to go ahead and, and sport our purple next, in two weeks. So Rick, you're going to miss the Purple Day.
Right.
But they will be coming in and speaking with us at council, so if anyone wants to jump on board with that, it's Purple Day. Let's see. I think that would be about it, new business. Okay.
Mayor, can I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
And I apologize that I forgot this, but Josh is also going to be speaking to county commissioners tomorrow at 10:45, so if there's any other information or if there's any questions that are thought up between now and tomorrow, he will be available again for discussion in council chambers, or I'm sorry, commissioner chambers at 10:45.
Commissioners?
Yes.
Thank you. Busy guy.
Thanks, Josh.
Moving on to old business. Martin Strata, council appointment is up for discussion. Let's see. I guess there was one thing after the meeting, I talked to Martine about this already last, two weeks ago, the discussion is about residency, and Martin shared with us his residency. And with that, I was approached by the fire chief stating that he did not think that that was up to code according to fire code being a residence above. So again, unfortunately, with the sunshine laws and things, this discussion being brought up in council, I did want Martine to know this was going to be brought up. So we talked earlier, but it is something that needs to come forward to council so that you are aware. Not stating anything more as to why, where, or when, it's just the fact that after he claimed that as his resident, it was brought up for questioning. So I'm giving you that information.
This information was brought up to me about two hours ago. I've had very little time to research it. My building is zoned as a B3. B3 is commercial as well as residential. I'm going to talk it over with my attorney to find out if I can stay up there. If not, I will immediately move from my business residence to another residence within the city limits.
Which you can live up there, if it is zoned B3.
Yeah.
And residential.
I just found this out, that it's zoned as a B3.
Right.
But I didn't know, I did not know that at the time.
Right, right.
Now, if you do get on the count-
My building is zoned as a B3. B3 is commercial as well as residential. I'm gonna talk it over with my attorney to find out if I can stay up there. If not, I will immediately move from my business residence to another residence within the city limits.
Which you can live up there if it is zoned B3.
Yeah.
And residential.
I just found this out, that it's zoned as a B3.
Right.
But I did not know that at the time.
Right, right.
Now, if you do get on the county website, which anybody can do, as far as that building is classified as commercial building with storage up above.
How long have you known this?
I just found it out this weekend.
Okay. Because I was just notified this two hours ago.
You can get on the county website. So, I'm my biggest thing, my number one, I don't have nothing against you personally. I just don't, you know, you probably feel I do, but I just like to go by the law, by the rules.
What I can say as far as the council itself is to go through the removal process, and I will not appeal any decisions made by this.
But what I am saying is, I don't want you end up getting in trouble with your business. Number one, you got, if you look on the county website, it says, "Commercial building with storage up above." You look at other commercial buildings, it says, "Multi-use apartments." Now, usually when you have an address with apartment up above, you have like 123 in front, and the apartments are 1.3 and 1/2, or 1.3A, or B. So, you got the same. Now, if you did fix it up to an apartment, maybe you did, but that means you would've had to get state permits, which would've let the county know so they could reevaluate your building for taxes. And my biggest concern is, too, I mean, you know, you got the same address, you know, what's the state of, you know, as far as Ohio Lottery Commission? Are they gonna, I'll say, well, yeah, he lives there, we can sell lottery tickets there or keynote. Same way with your state liquor. I don't know. I'm just, this is stuff that you should check out.
What I'm saying is, I was just privy to this information a few hours ago.
But what I'm saying is, that's another step that you made without checking out the facts. You know, I just hope you didn't fall in deeper by, you know, doing this. I mean, I want to see your business go. I mean, I don't play pool, and I don't drink, so I wouldn't walk in there, but I, you know, I'd like to see it go. I hate seeing empty buildings, but I just hope you didn't jump on, you know, to other mistakes by trying to correct one.
Do you want me on city council?
It's up to everybody else. I mean, I just...
I mean, it's what it comes down to.
Honestly, what I'd like to see is us do business.
If it turns out that the council wants me gone, I will humbly walk away.
I just don't want to get in trouble down the road finding out that your vote has affected something where, I mean, right here's a case... Oh, that's not it. Right here's a case where the guy's going to court for fraud. You know, I don't want to find out that your vote affects something in three months and somebody fights it and says, "Well, he should've never been on," then we're all in trouble. I mean, that's what I worry about. That's what I worry about.
Excuse me. I think the code addresses anything that was passed with a person on, even if they shouldn't have been on, is still valid. And it even goes on, or the charter, and it goes on to state that even if Martine were to get off and we replaced him and he appealed and came back on, anything that's replaced in the past, isn't that correct, Tom?
I think there's a provision in the removal process...
Right, that's the section that you gave us to read.
Yeah. That if there's a removal, the actions are still deemed valid.
Okay.
And also with respect to if the person is in fact removed later by virtue of a court appeal, that the action still would be, wouldn't affect councils.
Okay, thank you.
But having said that, I mean, I don't know if this is what Jeff's alluding to, but a citizen would be entitled to bring an action if, for whatever reason, but challenging the authority of a person to sit, they are entitled to bring that action, whether or not it would be successful or not, you know, as we've talked about that in the past. But I think that might be what Jeff is alluding to.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know, you know, if it, I just don't want to end up with a lawsuit doing now and end of January, it might be, you know, end of December. Because somebody gets something shot down or something goes through, and they don't like it, you know. See, you know, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to, you know, get in trouble for something like that.
And you sit on safety code committee?
Mm-hmm.
And so, a concern of mine then would be the code. You know, if you're living up above and there's code, zoning code, fire code, something that's not met, and you're up there.
I would go through the same process as any other citizen, and I'd have a due amount of days to fix whatever zoning violation I had. I would, obviously, I wouldn't vote on my own issues.
I know, I know, but I think you're living up there now, and it's, it doesn't meet code. It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet some kind of code, whether it be fire code or...
I haven't issued anything at this moment. I was just notified in a one-on-one conversation two hours ago, or two and a half hours ago now. I haven't had any time to prepare for this whatsoever. If it wasn't for the sake of Google and our code being online, I mean, it's never came up.
So, you weren't told, what had to be, you know, you weren't told it wasn't up to code?
No, no. I was told that because we weren't charging rent, that I could live up there. And there wasn't anything in the law saying that I couldn't live up there. And the only reason I was living up there is because we were a brand-new business. We didn't have security cameras in there. We didn't have a safe in there when we first opened. Now we do. We have multi-unit security system now. I mean, so, it's okay for, if it's a portion which is a problem with me living up there now, I will very easily move, and I can move out before the end of this weekend. If it's up to the city council, whether they want me on board or not, that's a different discussion. If it comes to that, where the majority of city council would like me to be removed, I will be, I will humbly step away. I will never have any grievances with the city. I'll still be involved in community programs. I'll still coach my kid in softball here. I'll still run a business. Absolutely, whatever decision they come up with today, I will stand by it.
Just to clarify, if there would be a desire by council to proceed in the removal process, that would have to be something that the mayor would have to initiate. And I think what's been discussed is that she, Mayor Hewer, would want a, some sort of direction by council by way of a vote requesting that she do that. So, if council decided to have that vote tonight and it were to pass by a majority, then that would be sort of a recommendation to Mayor Hewer to proceed with the removal process. And that would require public notification by way of giving Martin a, first of all, giving him notice, and then having it placed in the paper, and having a regular meeting in which the matter would be heard. So, just to clarify the process. Now, if council were to vote tonight to recommend to Mayor, that Mayor Hewer start the process, I mean, Martin could certainly, you know, at that point resign. I don't know if that's what you're intimating, Martin, or whether you would want or be waiting for the full hearing for council to actually... And I should clarify, it would be...
Or do we just sit down and vote? Obviously, I'm not a part of it. Well, what is the process?
Well, the, if council decided to, or I'm sorry, if Mayor Hewer decided to exercise the option to start the removal process, that would entail ultimately a hearing by council, which council would vote. You would not be part of that vote, and it would require three-fourths of the folks to vote affirmatively for the removal in order for that to take place. But that can't happen here tonight.
Now, if council votes, or and they feel that they don't want to go through the removal process, are we done with this? Or am I gonna be constantly waiting on an outcome of some sort?
Well, I think the mayor could, at her discretion, still initiate the process. She has to speak for herself, obviously.
Right. Well, I did speak at the very first time this was brought up, that I will do what council advises me as they're voting. I mean, if three-quarters of council wish for him to be off, then I would move forward. If it's not three-fourths council...
Well, just to clarify, Mayor Hewer, the three-fourths requirement is the code requirement.
Right.
If there's a formal removal hearing, I guess it would be...
Which, why would we even go to that if we don't even have it as, you know, a motion for them to even discuss it? Why would we even go forward?
Well, that, I understand, that's your prerogative.
Well, you mentioned writing up a resolution. Now, is that some kind of guarantee that we won't get in trouble for somebody coming
I wouldn't say it's a guarantee. If someone wanted to file an action to challenge the legitimacy of the appointment, I wouldn't guarantee against that. They would still be entitled to do that. I don't know. I guess the short answer is a resolution of that nature doesn't have any legal effect, right? It's just a council's expressing its opinion and view on the matter.
So, we're splitting the minutes and do the same thing? I mean...
Sure. The resolution is a little more formal. A motion would be less formal. Council expressing their own individual opinions reflected in the minutes would be even less formal, but still be, you know...
Well, am I gonna get anybody else's input on this, or am I shutting down myself?
Well, I, go ahead.
What I would like to see is, I would like to see us be able to move forward with the business in a unified way, whether we agree or disagree on a topic, in a unified way. And I've heard from even different committees that should be working together, that Martin, you've gone out on your own and talked to Toledo Edison, and come back, and Toledo Edison says, "Well, you guys are getting downtown's new streetlights." Well, no, we're not. Well, Martin Estrada, talk to us. You need to follow procedure. There is protocol.
The mayor asked me whether to...
Okay. There is protocol to follow as a council member. You are not administration. You are legislation. And I think that there's some confusion, and please learn the process. It doesn't mean that you can't talk to people, and we've had conversations about this type of thing before. There is a process, and these people do the work, and we do the voting. Doesn't mean you can't have a conversation, but it does mean that the conversation should start over here so that you can find out what they're doing. With downtown revitalization, the streetlights will come in with the downtown revitalization money. So, there are so many things that are happening like that, that we need to make sure that it is a unified effort and everybody's on the same page. And I would like to see that start happening.
That probably could've been cleared up by phone call. The light, the phone call, the message...
I don't want to talk about it.
I have to now. You brought it out.
Yeah.
Because there are several things like that.
The message to Mr. Keys was in regards to our flags that we're putting up to find out if we needed any additional liability or permission to put our flags on the flag posts that we've already done within, we've already approved. That was what the phone call was about. The light post was in regards to a friend of mine who works for Toledo Edison. I simply asked him if it was possible for us to put placards up on those small decorative lights so that people could see the signs of the business as they were driving by. He happened to bring it to his boss. I had no control over whether he was bringing it to his boss. I didn't ask him to bring it to his boss.
But that, again, is a conversation that should go through David.
It's an idea. It's an idea.
That should go through David.
Ideas start small, and then, once you get them organized, then you take them to committees. I mean, they're small ideas.
You are on a committee.
Oh, I know, but, I mean, it hasn't got...
And that's where it starts, with your committee.
It hasn't gotten anywhere. I'd love to see a dog park at some point, but there's nothing in...
And that starts with a committee.
There's nothing in the mix. It's just a, it's just an idea out there. I mean, obviously, there are plenty of other things we'd love to see. We'd love to see a hotel downtown. But you have to talk about it with somebody.
Right, with your committee.
And then, once it seems like a good idea, then you bring it to a committee. Some things are not good ideas.
Some things will not make it to the committee because it might just be a pipe dream, or it's just a wish list item that's just not committee-ready. You're okay to have your own thoughts about, wow, this would be a great idea. I applaud Martin for having energy to be a city council member. And hopes and dreams are okay to have. They don't have to go to a committee.
You can have your own ideas, but when it's already being discussed, and it's, there's already money for it, and it's already been in a committee, or something like that, yes, it does need to stay with committee.
I'm gonna do something that's really unorthodox. I'm gonna make a motion that I probably don't even support. I make a motion that we have the mayor initiate the removal process.
Why would you make a motion that you do not support it?
Because I'm gonna vote no for it, but we need to move. We need to have an up-and-down vote on whether or not we're gonna have the removal process initiated. Because if it's a no, then this is mute, according to you. You're not gonna go against the council's wishes.
Exactly.
And if it's a yes, then we begin the process. You put it in the paper, we have the hearing, we have the vote. If it's three-fourths...
According to Martine, he would not fight it, so why would it be a process?
What's that? The process that's outlined within the charter.
I understand that, but he's also stated that he would not fight that process.
I know.
So, what is the purpose, I mean, of him...
With motions out there.
Now, can you still do a resolution if the motion don't go through? I mean, I wanted to state somewhere that I disagree, and something comes up in three months, I can look back and tell a couple people, well, you know what?
You're looking to do your CYA, you know? We know what the acronym is. I don't need to say it. I understand that. It's well documented within the minutes. It's time to move forward. Let's have an up-and-down vote on whether or not we initiate the removal process. Martin says he's willing to accept the council's decision, so let's move forward. Instead of sitting here and berating a man that has energy for the position, let's move forward on what his wrongdoing is.
I wasn't berating him.
I'm finishing. Let me finish, and let's move forward on an issue of an oversight that he shared, I shared, Kathy shared, Heather shared, Jeff, and Rick. We all shared. So, let have the man have the vote.
Okay.
Let's do it. The motion's out there. Jeff, would you like to second it?
I'll second it.
There we go.
Now, just so you know, I wasn't berating him.
No, you weren't. Heather was.
I just hope he didn't get further in trouble.
I am not berating him.
A council member's allowed to have an idea.
I didn't say he couldn't have an idea.
And you said it has to go to committee?
When it's already an idea that's been brought into our committee, yes.
And sometimes, I think I would like to remind you that you're legislative and not administrative.
That's correct.
But that's a different day, different discussion.
That's correct.
The motion has a second.
Legislative.
Let's go.
Not administrative. And I talk to administration. I talk to administration on a regular basis.
Okay. In committee?
Yeah, in committee.
So, you do everything in committee?
I'm in committees.
You do everything in committee?
No, I go to administration, and I talk to them when I have questions.
That means it's in committee, according to you.
No, it doesn't. If I have questions, I can go to administration.
You just told Martin does.
And I can ask them. No, that is not exactly what I said. All right, let's stop this. What I want to say is...
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'd like to say something here before you've got your fingers going here and pointing to everybody. What I want to say is, when this was discussed with Martin, which was not brought forward by Martin, I called Thursday and told him I was gonna be out of town. Reason this discussion was today. Got back late Sunday, okay? Second thing is, you made your points. I also discussed with you about mistakes. That's why we had to bring this forward, okay? That's it. Not to be, be all in your face about what you did wrong, because, believe you me, we've all heard from certain council members over the time... Let me finish, let me finish, please. That what we've done right or what we've done wrong. We do not sit in these seats, we do not sit in these seats to get a pat on the back, okay? We understand, we all make mistakes. We understand that we all have made a mistake. But this is what we have to do as city council, Shane. What we have to do is approach it. Let everybody say what they want to say. You've made a motion. You also have attacked people on this, and you can use degraded. You can say attacked. I get to say that. But what I'm gonna say is, there is a motion on the table. But what I'm gonna say is there is a motion on the table, let's move forward, as Shane has asked.
Mayor, normally we would have, ask for a discussion. I don't wanna hang you out to dry on this. If I could at least make one statement here, is discussion on this vote is, um, because I know you don't wanna go through with this if you think it's futile. And the issue with Martine has to do with him being, not being an electorate.
Yes.
At the time he applied, and at the time he was appointed. It has nothing to do with his current living, or actually...
Well, I take that back. I will, I'll let you talk. I just wanna say that the reason that was brought up is 'cause you brought his address forward in the meeting two weeks ago, and that's why it came forward from the chief.
Yes, and in fact, I think when he applied, he was living on Cherry Street, and when he moved from Cherry Street to this business was when he changed his addresses.
Yes.
But no matter where he was, was, was living, whether it was legal or not, he was living in the city of Waasian.
Right.
And we've all seen the ad that was put in the paper. When Fred Allen resigned, the council put an ad in the paper saying that they were looking for applicants, and the requirement was that he be a resident of Waasian. Now, those of us that have read and memorized the city charter know that you need to be an electorate. Or those of us that have run for a position would probably realize that you have to be an electorate to run for an elected position, and assume that the same holds true to be appointed to an open elected position. But the council asked that any resident that was interested apply and state their qualifications. And Martine did.
Yep.
So you got what you asked for. Now we realize after the fact, you didn't meet the qualifications, the code, the charter qualifications, but you met council's qualifications. So that's the only issue here, whether, you know, I might be driving a car right now with fictitious plates on it, but that has nothing to do with what I was doing when you appointed me. But anyways, my point is, I would have to vote no on a removal based on that. He did not know he had to be an electorate, and he applied. Our body is the group that knew he had to be an electorate and didn't look into it.
And that, that is why I brought up, like, the Keno tickets and the lottery, or the state liquor. I'm just saying, you gotta check stuff out too, because...
Yes.
With this address, you know, is that, I don't know. I'm just, is it legal? Well, the state's not gonna say, well, you know, we didn't tell them. So that's my point on that.
So Mayor, I'm just talking to you prior to this vote to let you know how I feel, what, if and when we go forward with it, and why.
There's still a motion out there?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Sturz. Counselor Chamberlain?
No.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
To be on the safe side, I'm gonna say yes.
Counselor Shamp?
No.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada's entitled to vote.
Counselor Estrada?
Abstain.
Three a's, two nays, one abstain.
Well, the abstention counts as a, just a non-vote, so you have a three-two vote, which is a majority of the six, of the five.
So the vote is noted?
I don't know that you need to decide that this evening.
If water's still running, we go from here.
Well, um, I guess the motion, I'm assuming, was to, uh, whether or not to recommend to Mayor Hewer to initiate the process, if I understood the motion correctly. So council has voted to, um, recommend to Mayor Hewer that she initiate that process, and now it'll be up to her discretion whether or not to exercise that.
Well, she said she wanted four-fifths.
Well...
To make the recommendation.
That's for the removal.
For the removal?
That's actually for the removal process.
So am I being removed or not being removed? That's still up for discussion.
Well, now it starts the proceeding.
Well, again, Mayor Hewer would have to...
And if I decide to or not.
So the vote tonight, maybe the best way to view it is, the vote is a, um, just a recommendation to Mayor Hewer with respect to council's views on the subject. It's up to her whether she, um, she would have to initiate the process.
Martin, if the, if the process is initiated and the votes remain the same, you'll finish the term.
Okay. I just wanna be done with it and move on to business, move on to regular business.
Exactly.
I think that's what our council wants. Give me a second. With that vote, um, I guess I will have my decision for council at the next meeting. I'm not gonna make it tonight. It's not needed. I would like to put all considerations, including the citizens of Waasian, cost, and everything that they're gonna go through with this. I do need to think about it, and I will get back with you next council meeting with my answer. Approval of the bills, please?
So moves?
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Sturz. Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Sturz?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Shamp?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Coast?
Yes.
Six a's, zero nays, motion carries.
We have a motion for adjournment, please.
So moves?
Second.
Motion moved by Counselor Chamberlain and second by Counselor Estrada for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.